...session of June 25th, 2024. This meeting is called to order. The tenants' roll call, I'm not going to call because everybody's here. So with that, Ms. Barr, would you go ahead and get her going?
Keeping of fowl and other city code cleanup language.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Bowling or code official, I are here to present on a law that changed, a state law through a House bill that'll go into effect on September 14th, impacting how we regulate the keeping of fowl on residential properties. And then we've got some cleanup language as far as how we're doing enforcement in Chapter 19 that Tim will cover. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bowling.
Thank you, Rick. Mayor, members of the council. Members of the council. The House Bill 2325 is recently passed and it requires that cities now allow up to six fowl on residential properties or any properties located in the city. Historically, keeping of fowl has been enforced through as a non-permitted use in the UDC. The UDC is enforced criminally, so you have filed criminal charges for keeping fowl on residential property currently. So what we are proposing is an ordinance that'll go in Glendale City Code, Chapter 25, Keeping of Fowl. And this complies with all the regulations that are, that the House bill maintains. It's similar to the mobile food vending ordinance where it tells you, it tells the cities what we can enforce and then it lists a few things that we cannot enforce. So with this, we can restrict, prohibit roosters, male fowl from being in a resident, within the Glendale city limits. Residents are allowed to have up to six fowl in the rear yard of the property. Fowl must be kept in an enclosure, rear side yard at least 20 feet from a neighboring property. Maximum allowed size of the enclosure can be up to 200 square feet with a maximum height of eight feet. And any enclosure must comply with spacing and setbacks requirements that are provided in the UDC. The state statute also lists these types of things, and so we thought we'd include it in the ordinance as well. Manure must be picked up and disposed of, composted twice a week. Composted manure must be maintained to prevent the migration of insects. And feed must be stored in insect-proof and rodent-proof containers. Fowl must be contained and are prohibited from running at large. And then the definition of fowl is a cock or hen of the domestic chicken. With that, before we move on, are there any comments, questions on this section of the code?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Bowling. Male fowl, are they prohibited entirely or just on certain sized lots? Or what is, what, what leeway do we have and how, what are we going to do as regards? I know some people do have roosters.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, male fowl, roosters capable of crowing are prohibited from being within the city limits. They, they have been.
Period. Okay. All right. My second question is on the keeping of fowl. Does the language in this HB 2325, does it supersede CCNRs? Or where, where does that, like if CCNRs address keeping of fowl and they prohibit it entirely in a, in the CCNRs, does this override that? Or do the CCNRs stand?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, I'll ask Mr. Gruber to weigh in on that.
Yeah, I think it says.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomalchov, my recollection of the language of the bill is that it doesn't say anything about CCNRs. So my presumption is that they still stand. It talks about what cities can do in their own ordinances, although I would say I haven't specifically looked at that question for staff. So that's my presumption.
All right. Thank you. I had to have one more question, Mayor. So if CCNRs are now silent on prohibition, this, this bill doesn't prohibit them from, I mean, I know it's difficult to amend CCNRs, but the bill doesn't prohibit HOA from trying to amend their CCNRs? Because some of the older HOAs don't, they're silent on keeping fowl, period. So does, this literally is only addresses what cities can do and it doesn't address at all CCNRs and HOAs?
Mayor, members of council and Councilmember Tomalchov, yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I could be off here, but I believe that, I believe I'm correct. I, I think it does supersede H. I, I think, I, I think that all the rights the city has, we lost. So Mr. Gruber could be right. I hope he's right, but, but I, but I, I think he's wrong.
Mayor and council, we'll take a look. As I said, we hadn't specifically analyzed that issue. So we'll take a look and if, if we need to update you, we'll let you know.
Mayor, if I could. Well, CCNRs are allowed to prohibit things that the city allows, other things that the city allows, CCNRs are allowed to prohibit.
But this, this is, we can't supersede state law. That's the problem.
I know that the ADU bill, the cities, CCNRs are, stand with the ADU bill. Is that correct, Mr. Gruber? So if your ADUs are prohibited in your CCNRs, that, they're prohibited in your CCNRs in spite of the bill that was adopted this past session. Is that correct?
Mayor, council, Councilmember Tomalchov, yes. And in fact, the original state prohibition on, on city ordinances restricting short-term rentals also allowed CCNRs of HOAs to, to, to deviate from that if they wished.
I think it'd probably be helpful to, to have somebody do an analysis and send us a memo so we can advise residents whether or not their CCNRs will cover them. Thank you.
I, I, I hope you're right. I really, really hope that you're right because we've, we've been through this battle a few years ago and I don't want to do it all over again. But legislature, legislature's the legislature. But let's hope you're right.
Okay, thank you. In addition, there's a, Chapter 19 landscaping code is for commercial property. We've had 115 cases of this issue this year. It's commercial properties maintaining the landscaping around it. Right now, the code that was written, it hasn't been changed since 1963 as it addresses the penalties for it. And right now, it says the city attorney will collect civil fines through a city court for violations of that chapter. That process hasn't happened in a long, long time. So we were ready to write a citation this year and looking at how the, the fines were collected, the judge wasn't going to approve that citation. It was up as a fine also of $1,000 a day. So to better align Chapter 19 with the rest of the city code and how it's enforced, we took language from the nuisance ordinance and, and, and put that into Chapter 19 as far as penalties are concerned, which gives the code enforcement the opportunity to go civilly or criminally. So we can write a civil citation for any violation that occurs on commercial landscaping property. And this language is directly out of Chapter 25, the nuisance code. And it talks about the penalties. Again, visible beyond the boundaries of the lot, could be a public nuisance, it could be violation, could be civil or criminal. Code inspector, inspector or police officer could write a citation. Jurisdiction is in Glendale Municipal Court and the court would have jurisdiction to issue orders permitting to abate.
Question, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I wonder if, if the word visible should be observed because we just, just, and it's starting to ramp back up, but we had issues with some lakes up in Arrowhead Ranch. And some of the issues may not necessarily be visible, but they can be observed with the smell or other things. So I don't know whether that might be something we might want to take a look at, that it's just, you could observe something by smelling it. Or it could be something that maybe makes a lot of noise or something like that. But I don't know whether visible is exactly the right word there. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, we, we have that language in both. That A talks about conditions that are visible to a person standing. Section C talks about observed. So inspector or police officer that observes a violation. So I, we may ask law if that covers it or if we need to change Section A.
Okay.
Mayor, that concludes our presentation. If we have consensus on both changes, then we'll bring that back to a voting meeting.
Any other questions?
Just a comment and perhaps a question. The, the actual impact of this, say on smaller lots, say thousand square foot lot, we're talking about the fowl. I mean, you have a 20-foot setback from the sides. Is there, is that setback also away from the existing resident's home? Or is that just the side yards in the backyard?
Mayor, Councilmember Malamar, the 20-foot setback is from the property line.
Property.
But any structure needs to have a 10-foot separation from the primary structure.
Okay. So have you looked at the practicality of this actually being implemented in smaller lots? I don't think it would fit in most cases. If you have a 10-foot setback from the property, you have a 20-foot coop, and then you, that means there's got to be at least another 20-foot to the backyard or the side yard. So I just wanted to kind of get your opinion on if, if this is really going to apply very much in the city of Glendale to these smaller lots that I think would be a more concern for residents than, say, larger lots.
Mayor, Councilmember Malamar, as with any accessory structure, there will be some lots that just will not be able to put an accessory structure in the backyard because they can't meet building setbacks. That will be the case on some of the smaller lots that you're talking about. So they still have to meet standards and the, the state statute doesn't preempt the setback standards and this, and the building separation standards that exist in the UDC and other city codes.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure the public understands that just because we now have an open ordinance that says you can have fowl, you still have to meet the setback requirements from both your own home and the property lines. And there's still going to be restrictions there. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Ryan Lee if he would come to the podium and explain this. Again, I think that we have a different view of, of what's been explained. Mr. Lee?
Mayor, council members. So when you look at the bill, House Bill 2325, it, it mentions "A municipality may not, may not adopt any law, ordinance, or other regulation that prohibits a resident of a single-family detached residence, residence on a lot that is one-half acre or less in size from keeping up to six fowl in the backyard of the property." Okay, so six fowl. Then it explains on page two. Excuse me, I'm looking for the definition. It mentions, sorry, on page one, lines 3334, "For the purposes of this section, fowl means a cock or hen of the domestic chicken." So it explains that it, we, we as cities on, on a lot that's a half acre or less must allow up to six fowl in the backyard. And then the exceptions below that say, "A municipality may prohibit the resident from keeping male fowl, including roosters." So that's right there. Any other questions?
Yeah, that, that was the one question. The other question is HOAs. Do they still retain their rights? Or are they being overridden by the state?
Mayor, council members, what it meant, what it says here in the bill, a property rights, the property rights of property owners in, in this state outlined in this section are of statewide concern. This section preempts all local laws, ordinances, and chapter, and charter provisions to the contrary. So generally speaking, when there is a bill that preempts cities, towns, HOAs, it'll actually go in there and say, it'll address the CCNR piece. So the fact that this is silent, I don't have an answer to that question because it doesn't explicitly say one way or the other whether a CCNR or private covenant is impacted by this legislation.
Dances around it.
Yeah.
Mayor, thank you. Mr., Mr. Lee, the first sentence you read of that bill, as I paraphrase, it says, "A municipality may not enact a law."
Yes. Mayor, Councilmember Turner, that is correct. And then the next section, because they have to follow the different chapters of state law or titles. So Title IX is a municipality. And then Title XI is counties. And that is also the same, the same law is just repeated in Title XI.
Thank you. But if I may, it says, "A municipality may not enact a law." An HOA is not a municipality. CCNRs are not a municipality. We don't enforce HOA regulations. That's up to them to do. We don't enforce CCNRs. Those, not every property, not every neighborhood that has CCNRs is, also has an overlying HOA. This is just restricting municipalities from enacting a law that would restrict it. It doesn't prevent HOAs from enacting laws. It doesn't prevent CCNRs, which are agreements between neighbors inside the same subdivision, from enacting a law. That's how I would interpret it.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Turner, without that legal background on my part, as it explains here in the bill, it is silent. So I, I have no, I, I can't answer that question.
Mr. Gruber.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you, Mayor. And I, I tend to agree with what Councilmember Turner said in, in my previous answer. The only cautionary note I would have is that all, you know, HOAs that wish to interpret their own CCNRs, they're probably best off of getting their own legal counsel to answer this question. But I think it's fair to say this, the statute, the proposed bill was silent on the matter. And so I read it the same way that Councilmember Turner said. It's, it's silent about HOAs and their abilities.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not arguing. I, I, I hope that's correct. I, I worry that it's not though, because sometimes when the things are left silent, that's when things really get messed up. Mr. Malamar?
Yeah. And this whole discussion brings up another concern about what I was talking about earlier. If we're prohibited from having any rules or regulation or ordinances, who enforces this if they don't meet the setbacks?
Mayor, Councilmember Malamar, we have setback requirements in the UDC right now that are enforced by code.
But it says we can't have any enforcement of fowl in our ordinances or laws. So I'm, I'm confused.
Well, yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Malamar, the state is doing this more often where they're saying cities have the authority to create an ordinance. You may do this, you may not do that. If the city chooses not to do an ordinance, then there's nothing that we can enforce. By putting an ordinance in place, then we can enforce it. We can enforce the regulations up to six fowl and the setback requirements that we've put in this statute right here. If, if we choose silent, for example, the mobile food vendor ordinance, they, they put a, the ARS passed a, a rule on food vendors that said cities may create an ordinance. If you create an ordinance, you may regulate this, you may not regulate that. And, and, but we didn't have an ordinance in place. Now we've, the UDC has passed and the UDC does appropriately address mobile food vending, since that's in there. But prior to UDC to get passed, we didn't have an ordinance that addressed mobile food vendors, other than the fact that they had to have a business license. So this is, we could choose not to do any ordinance, but we would not be able to enforce how many chickens are at a property and the items that we have in this particular ordinance.
Okay, so we can put an ordinance in place that says six chickens is the max. And if somebody complains that somebody has 15, we can go cite them.
Correct.
Okay, so the verbiage is confusing because it says we can't have any ordinances regarding fowls and half acres and less. Yet, yet you say we can. So it's a little confusing, the law, how it reads versus what we can actually do. Thank you.
Is your mic on?
Correct me if I'm wrong. The state cannot, I mean, a municipality cannot create a law that prohibits people from keeping fowl.
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, we cannot create a law that keeps people from keeping up to six fowl if they're on a half acre or less.
All right. Now, a lot of new subdivisions that have been built, the, the backyard setback is like 20 feet. Now, under C of our ordinance, fowl must be kept in enclosure in the rear or side yard of the property, at least 20 feet from the neighboring property. Have we not there created a law or a stipulation that prohibits someone from keeping fowl, up to six fowl, when the state has said the city cannot create such a law?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, what, what the state has said is you can't prohibit somebody from keeping fowl. You can regulate how they keep fowl. And these are the regulations that you can put in place. So if that means that certain property owners will not be able to keep fowl because they cannot meet these requirements, then that, that, then they won't be able to keep fowl. But that's, that's not contrary to the law.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor.
The legislation is silent on regulations that cities may impose, but absolutely guarantees that people can keep up to six fowl on their property. Is that my understanding?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, no. Any property owner of, of a, of a half acre, quarter acre or less can keep fowl up to six, provided they can meet all these other regulated, all these other stipulations. If the council chooses to adopt the ordinance, as Mr. Bowling said, you can choose not to adopt the ordinance, then we wouldn't be able to regulate the number of fowl, whether they have roosters. We would still be able to regulate the setback requirements that are in the UDC. So if they build a structure, it still has to be 10 feet away from the primary structure, and it still has to be a certain distance from the property line, depending on the height of the structure. So we can still do some regulating, but we won't be able to protect the community as well as we would be able to if this were to be adopted.
Well, my problem is I'm having trouble reconciling the fact that a lot of these new divisions have very small backyards. And it seems to me that with our Item C, we have essentially prohibited them from having fowl. Would that be correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, that is correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Now, can we legally do that? Or has the state said, "No, you can't do that"?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, we are legally allowed to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
If, if we adopt this?
Yes.
Mayor, if, if I may, Mayor, Councilmember Clark.
There you are.
I, I want to maybe clarify something that Section A, B, and C are not our requirements. They're the requirements that are set by the state legislature that we would adopt into our UDC. And so what the legislature often does is they create this preemption, and then everyone storms the castle and says, "Yeah, but, yeah, but." And then they start carving out all the exceptions. And so their intent originally was, "Hey, we're going to, we're going to make sure that cities cannot prohibit fowl in their backyard," and it was a blanket. We came back as cities and towns and said, "No, that doesn't work because you could have an overpopulation of hens, there's proximity to homes, there's, the counties came back and said there's county health concerns if you're not cleaning the coops regularly." So then they said, "Okay, fine." Cities and counties cannot prohibit up to six fowl unless these specific conditions are met that we set as a legislature. And so very rarely, in my time with the legislature, have I seen a deviation from setback requirements. Usually setback requirements are, are the common regulate, it's a common regulation at the legislature. This year, on this bill, they said, "Let's not do setbacks because of the smaller homes." This was the year they also were trying to reduce the lot sizes for homes. "Let's do a proximity from the structure." So that's how we got to 20 feet from the neighboring property. So if these homes are, if there's not 20 feet north, south, east, west, between, between the homes, they cannot have chickens in their backyard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm curious how this could even be enforced because how are you going to regulate how the feed is stored? And how are you going to regulate whether or not the manure is picked up? And those are the, those are the concerns that residents had all along with keeping fowl in the backyards. And it's not, if you can't observe it, if code can't observe it, then how, how are these going to be enforced?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, we'll do the best we can, is, is the best answer I have. What we do, if, if we get a complaint about this issue, it'll be occurring in the backyard, which is a private area, and, and we're not allowed to look over the fence to see if that's happening. But we would go up, knock on the door, and at least educate the owner about what the rules are sometime, and then we'll ask for permission to take a look. Sometimes the owners will give us permission to take a look. If they don't, then we'll do the best we can to educate them. At times, we have to be beyond the boundaries of the property. So if there is another access point, like a neighbor with maybe a chain link fence between, or an alley with a, a fence that's not opaque, we can view a violation from there. You know, like I said, we'll, we'll do the best we can to determine whether a violation exists on those things. We adopted those parts of the ordinance purely because they were in the state statute and they're verbatim for what the state statute says. We thought it was a, a good thing to include. Enforcement will be a challenge.
Yeah, the biggest concern I've been hearing from residents is their roof rats are already a problem. And that's what the concern is, is this is just going to be an open invitation to more, more roof rats. So, you know, with the, especially with the feed. But are we going to, my last question is, are we going to push this information out so people know what the rules are? So we're working with Public Affairs on some sort of education campaign for residents about if they, now you can have chickens, but here's, here's the rules?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, if council chooses to adopt the ordinance at the voting meeting or the time of the voting meeting in August, it would be, we'll work with Public Affairs to make sure the community is aware of the change.
All right, very good. Thank you. I support it.
Any other questions? Okay, so we have a consensus? Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Item two?
Crow 303 AZ, annexation of approximately nine acres for the property located south of the southeast corner of West Ocatillo Road and North Alsop Avenue.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report on item number two is Tabitha Perry, Assistant Deputy Director, Development Services.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. In accordance with the city's annexation policy, staff is seeking consensus to proceed with the annexation application AN 261, known as Crow 303 AZ. Background information for context, in 2020, city council approved an annexation and entitlements for Crow 303 PAD, which is approximately 146 acres located at the southeast corner of Glendale Avenue and Alsop Road. Today's presentation is a remnant parcel that was intended to be incorporated with the Crow 303 PAD, but at the time of annexation and PAD approval, the subject property had not been acquired. The subject property is approximately nine acres in size and is located at the southeast corner of Ocatillo Road and Alsop Avenue. The property is currently in the county with a zoning classification of RU 43, which allows for residential development. Upon annexation, the city would apply the most light compatible zoning, which would go from, which would be the RR 45, which also will allow for residential development. The applicant intends to rezone the property by amending the existing Crow PAD and incorporating the property into the existing Crow 303 PAD boundaries to allow for industrial development. Here's the vicinity map that depicts that the subject property is approximately 12 miles from City Hall. Here is the annexation map that basically shows the subject property does abut the city boundaries. Here's an area map just for additional context. To the north and to the east is the existing Crow PAD property. The subject property is within the Luke Air Force Base contour area, so the proposed PAD amendment would be appropriate for the industrial developments. Here's the current annexation map. Once again, just providing context to where the subject property is in comparison to other annexation applications in the queue. in comparison to other annexation applications in the queue. Through a third party, we receive a fiscal impact analysis with, which projects that the inclusion of the subject nine acres into the existing PAD would provide a positive net fiscal impact to the city. With one-time fees estimated at $7.8 million and a possible net impact to the city on an annual basis of $560,000. Once again, Mayor and Council, this is taken in consideration that the nine acres would be incorporated into the existing Crow 303 PAD. Here's a bar chart just showing those numbers from a different perspective. If, if council provides the consensus today, the next step would be a blank petition to allow for public input, followed by the annexation for adoption. And with that, Mayor and Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? None? No questions?
Thank you.
You don't need anything from us, you're just telling us what's going on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, I apologize for that. Once again, I just need a consensus from council to proceed.
I thought so when you were leaving, I went, well, maybe she didn't. Have a consensus, move forward with the annexation? Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Item three?
Request to rename El Barrio Park.
Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report is our Parks Director, Mr. John Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mayor and Council, uh, bringing back an item that is probably familiar to you, uh, regarding the request we received to rename El Barrio Park. So I'll give a quick, uh, background on some steps we've previously taken. Uh, this park is located at 54th Avenue and Ocatillo Road, just across the street from the Glendale Community Center in the Ocatillo District. We received a request from the leaders of the Barrio Corazon E. Alma organization to rename to Veterans, Veteranos Park, to dedicate the park to the men and women who have served in the past, present, and future. This is an extension of the, uh, Heart of Glendale Recognition Plaque Project that you recently approved. Um, and during the February 13th, uh, council workshop, council gave direction to staff to proceed with, following our normal naming policy process. With that, staff, uh, sent a postcard mailing to 1764 homes in English and Spanish. Uh, it included a QR code for an online survey, included mail-in and drop-off options as well. Uh, we received 19 online survey submittals and no mail-in or drop-in ballots. Of those 19 online results, uh, we had 13 supporting, uh, keeping the name El Barrio Park, and then one or two votes on some of the various names you see on the slide. The requester Group, uh, the community leaders, uh, submitted a petition at that time that had 123 signatures, uh, supporting the renaming to Veteranos Park. At the time, uh, the petition just included signatures. Um, so we took this to the April, uh, Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission meeting. Uh, the commission recommended renaming El Barrio Park to Veteranos Park. Uh, then we brought this, uh, item to, to this, to the April 23rd council workshop. Uh, council requested more information on the petition and the signatures that were submitted. With that, staff met with the organizers, discussed that direction received, um, and therefore the organizers went out, uh, got a new petition and submitted it, uh, supporting the name change to Veteranos Park. Uh, the organizers submitted a new petition with 152 signatures, uh, and, and those signatures listed either their address or council district of residence. Of those 152 signatures, uh, there were 148 listed as Glendale addresses, uh, one listed a Phoenix address, and three listed, uh, local business, local Glendale businesses. Um, these, we have taken the, we have not vetted the, the addresses exactly. We've just taken the, the, taken their word that these are accurate, you know, accurate statements that were submitted on the petition. Uh, so the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission this last, uh, month, uh, heard this, uh, report again, and they again, uh, voted to recommend to rename El Barrio Park as Veteranos Park. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Balde Negro, uh, this is your district. Do you have any comments?
I, I spoke with the organizers, um, they were, when we tabled the, a few months ago, they were upset because they thought that that was a, a no. And I explained to them, no, this isn't a no, this is the, we wanted to verify signatures because something was happening at that time. Um, explained to them in, in detail what was going on. Um, and then they explained, um, their concerns and why and how they were doing the signature collecting. Um, a lot of the, um, residents in that neighborhood, including my parents, are not very technical savvy. Uh, the technology is not their strong point, and their thing is meeting in person, talking in person, signing a signature and getting that, uh, going forward. Um, after meeting with them, um, I felt very comfortable that, uh, they, it, it would be the right thing to do, the, um, forth, further reasoning behind it. Uh, my father's a veteran, um, up and down my specific block, I, I would say half the original neighbors there were veterans. Um, and extensively, just going further, further out, there were a lot of veterans in that neighborhood. Um, my dad's one of those veterans, doesn't want attention, doesn't want to get involved in stuff like that. That's just, that's his way of operating. But after talking with the other veterans, um, and they explained what they wanted, I said, you know, there's the process. It, it wasn't a no, they were just tabling it for more information, and that's what I was here to do, and they trusted me. Um, and, and here we are, and I believe it's the right thing to do for them.
Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question. Um, you said there were X number of Glendale addresses. Were they all within the Ocatillo District or in proximity to that park? Or did they come from all over Glendale?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Clark, the majority of the, uh, signatures that, not all of them filled out which district they lived in. The ones that did fill it out, they all listed Ocatillo. So of the 148 addresses that were, uh, listed within Glendale, I don't have an exact count, but it was a very high percentage that listed they were in the Ocatillo District.
Thank you.
Mr. Burn?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Ginni, um, well, a little bit concerned or interested in how the responses from the 1700 homes that were mailed a postcard are so different than, than the survey, I guess. And now we didn't get that many responses, it's not a, you know, it's not a sample size that we could have any confidence in. But there were 13 that said, keep the name El Barrio, and there were two that said, change it to Veteranos, Veteranos. And so my question is, at the last time that the Parks Commission considered this and made a recommendation to change the name, they were aware of these results from that mailing survey?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Turner, yes, they received the, the same data.
Okay. I'm happy to go with their recommendation, and they've given it full consideration. Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to address, uh, Councilmember Balde Negro's, uh, expression that the organizers were concerned that it was a no. I just wanted to explain what, at least for me, my concern initially was, is that we had 123 signatures. At the time, when we, this was first presented to us, we had the results of the survey that were overwhelmingly, as Councilmember Turner said, in favor of keeping the existing name. And then we had 123 signatures that we did not know where they were from. And so rather than moving forward, when we don't know whether they're Phoenix resident, who, who these people were, we wanted to make sure that we weren't moving ahead without input from Glendale residents. So I just wanted to say that that was what the reason was, and so that they understand what we were doing, is we wanted to hear from the residents in the area and make sure that that's who we were hearing from. And it's better to delay doing something and doing it right than doing something without having all the information. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else?
Uh, that was my first difficult phone call from a resident, and that was like 90 minutes. Um, in the beginning, it was, though very polite, aggressive and upset. And at the end of that conversation, we were friends. When we met, we became friends, and, and he's been helping me ever since. So that, that was, uh, my first, um, dipping my toe into that kind of thing. But, um, what was great was is that he understood, he just wanted clarity. And, and, and thank you, uh, Councilman Tomalchov, for understanding that, or explaining that it wasn't they were saying no, and I had explained them over and over and over again. Eventually, on the 89-minute mark, understood, and, and then we were good to go.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna ask for a consensus for the renaming. We have a consensus? Yeah, it looks like unanimous.
Thank you.
I guess, uh, Mr. Phelps is up.
Downtown Campus Reinvestment Project Update.
Mayor, members of the council, this evening you, uh, marks an important milestone for the downtown, uh, reinvestment project. And so we've, we've coordinated this workshop to help answer any questions and provide you additional information as you consider tonight the adoption of GMP 3. And so I'm gonna walk you through, uh, information here. One of my commitments, uh, both internally to our team and to the council, was to make sure that as we understood the pricing and the, and the projections in terms of how we were doing, that we would try to deliver the news as early as we started to understand changes to the project, rather than to wait, uh, which oftentimes happens, from my experience, happens at the very tail end of a project, to where then the elected officials oftentimes feel like they didn't have a lot of options. So today I'm gonna be bringing you some news. Initially, it's gonna look like, um, uh, some not-so-positive news, but I want to walk you through, because I think there's actually, um, there's a, there's a lot of good that we'll be discussing here today. Um, I've got, uh, Don Vessler and Eddie Garcia here to help answer questions, but I'm gonna walk you through a quick presentation and then open it up for, uh, questions. So I want to show you kind of the, uh, kind of where the original budget was that the council approved in 2023. And, uh, that was a project that included our soft cost, construction cost, and Murphy Park at 89.9 million. Our new current estimate, uh, based on a tremendous amount of more information, is now at 96 million. Now, when I say more information, is that obviously when you start out, uh, budgeting and, and forecasting a construction cost, you have very little hard numbers to work with, you have a lot of, you know, kind of, uh, parameters to work within. But today, as we sit here, Oakland Construction has received written bids on close to 90% of the work that we're needing to be done on this project. So where two years ago, we had maybe 5% of that kind of committed cost, today we're sitting at 90%. So the information that we're providing you, we believe is, is very accurate and should bring a certain amount of, of, of comfort and ease to the council. So I want to walk you through what the drivers are for this, because I think it's important to understand. And then, uh, after we talk about the factors that are causing, uh, this, uh, small increase in the budget, uh, I'm gonna go through some mitigation, uh, strategies that the staff has come up with. Um, and then I do want to talk real quickly then about any remaining risk factors, so that as we track this project, you feel like, uh, that you're fully informed. So going back, there's really two drivers that's caused this. And the first one we're really talking about is construction inflation, and then we're also gonna throw in what we call a quantity, uh, impact. So when we baseline our budget with Oakland, we put a, an, an inflation factor into our forecasted budget. We knew that while we were giving the council a construction budget today, that we wouldn't be starting construction for a year, year and a half later, in some cases, almost two years later, and that there'd be an impact on inflation. So we, uh, are, through the development of the budget, uh, we looked at the national drivers for inflation, and we built those, uh, those components into the budget. But something has happened here in the Phoenix area that is kind of a unicorn as compared to most of the major markets in the US. And it's really, if you were gonna point your finger at one area, is just to remind the council that, uh, our region is currently expect, uh, uh, experiencing almost $50 billion in investment in the, uh, the TSMC and supporting development in and around the area. And 50 billion is a huge number that has driven a lot of the cost for materials. It has clearly driven the labor market and the specialty trades. And so part of the, uh, of the increased costs, which we're showing for inflation and quantity, uh, about $2.6 million, over and above the amount of inflation that we had programmed in, uh, back in 2023. The other thing is, I want to mention quickly, is the quantity. Um, as we deconstructed the building and got a better observation of the, of the existing framework that we'd be rebuilding from, and after we were able to kind of detail and spec out what we're gonna rehang, as you know, the council liked the idea of going to a masonry exterior, one that will last, uh, you know, substantially longer. Um, there was a weight component difference between the kind of foam, styrofoam, stucco material that we had, had thrown on there. Now we're gonna be, uh, hanging on the exterior side of our, a, a much more durable, long-lasting project. And so in looking at that, the design team felt we needed to do some additional reinforcement of steel. We also had examples of steel that had, had some compromise in its integrity. Again, th- these were all hidden by walls and by things we couldn't see. But after we kind of tore it apart, we, uh, they came back, and originally, I think we were gonna be just a hair under 100 million tons of steel for the project, but we've had to add about 60 million additional tons of steel to make sure that what we're building is, is gonna build and last for the length of time that, that is, uh, appropriate for this type of investment. So when we take the quantity of the steel, and we take the fact that our market i- is an exception to almost every other commercial market in the United States because of inflation, that has added roughly about, uh, $2.65 million to our original budget. The second thing that, uh, that is driving this is what we're referring to as scope refinements. I'd like to walk you through a couple of these refinements. So we'll start first with, uh, our power. We knew we'd be making improvements and enhancements to our power system at City Hall. What we didn't, uh, recognize early on is that APS, their new standards for how you, um, how you power up large buildings, they want to now have access via a crane so they can remove large components quickly if there's a major outage. And so this required us to relocate our main power, uh, area for the entire complex to the south portion of the parking garage, which via a well, uh, light well, it's already in place, APS could now, uh, be able to get a crane in to make major repairs. This is actually a benefit, obviously, for the city, because we don't want to be down over a lengthy period of time. So I think the regulation and the, the new standard is, is, is appropriate, but we hadn't anticipated that when we put our original, uh, budget together. Originally, the touch on the council chambers was pretty light. But as we've worked with the council and we've received feedback from the council, we obviously are making more and more of an investment into this space. One of the things that we had thought we would not have to do is install an elevator connecting the, the basement level of the, of the council chambers with the upper area. Our thought originally was, the lower area is gonna be primarily, uh, used for the amphitheater in terms of green space, storage, and, and other things. So we didn't necessarily see a lot of up and down need, but in talking with building safety and with our design team, it became clear that we needed to install elevators. And so part of the refinement of our scope was, uh, was doing that. We've added some additional money, uh, to take care of all of the restrooms, to bring them up to standard. We also, and we discussed this with the council previously, but at one point, we were gonna, you know, we've, we've got an entire campus that are, that are affected by our hardscapes or our sidewalks. If you go and look along Glendale Avenue, you'll see a certain type of material. But as you work your way around towards Murphy Park, we have some areas where there is brick, other areas where it's, the, the type of concrete is different. So we wanted to have a consistent hardscape plan for the entire campus, so that when, whether you're standing on 59th, uh, Avenue at Glendale or Glen, or whether you're at 58th or 59th and Glen, you'll see the same surface and hardscape. So we did add some money to the budget so that we can rip out all of the existing hardscapes and replace them as part of the project. Uh, we found something, we were able to better detail the amphitheater and, uh, some of the sound and lights requirements. We beefed up considerably the, uh, the rigging component. Uh, as we talked to, uh, promoters and to bands, we needed to be able to fly a lot more difficult and heavier equipment to be able to bring in larger events. And so again, we, we've seen some increase of roughly 645,000 on the amphitheater. Uh, we didn't have a signage plan for the campus, and so we've put money in the budget for a complete signage. This would be wayfinding both internal to the building and external to the building. Um, we also have come across some opportunity to do some additional sound attenuation, uh, now that we that we understand the exterior cladding. And so all total, those came in and added approximately three million dollars to the project. I think it'd be very easy to say that every one of these add value to the investment. Certainly, we could figure out a way to reduce scope down, if that's the desire of the council, but we felt these were all very smart investments into the project. So then if we kind of look at those, other area is we have kind of some soft cost changes. Now, I want to, the largest one we had in our soft cost is the council wanted the project to now include looking at the Velmatig Library. So one of the elements we did is we asked Holly Street to do some initial programming and space, kind of looking at the space utilization and look at the whole Velmatig Library. If you recall, one of the things that we got feedback from our citizens, when our design team went out and had public meetings, was there was a serious concern about the city paving over all of Murphy Park. They wanted more open space, more green space, more landscaping, not less. So bringing in Holly Street to look at the Velmatig Library was added on. And then also in there, because of the scope and the complexity of this project, we've hired a firm called EDS. We have a project manager, Susan, who has been highly involved. She helped deliver the Gilbert City Hall remodel. She's very experienced, but we felt we needed to strengthen our internal team, and so that makes up for the largest portion of the five-hundred thousand. So the neck, kind of the delta of all that is roughly five-hundred thousand dollars in soft cost changes. So when we put those together, we see the inflation in quantity about two-sixths, the refinements at three million, and the soft cost change, that comes up to a new construction change of six-point-one million. So what I'd like to do now is walk you through, you know, some steps that we would like to propose to the council to consider going forward. The first thing is, our internal team and working with the design team have identified almost one-hundred items, elements, and project elements that we believe are strong candidates for value engineering. So we have a design shret coming up here in the very near future, working on these items. Our team, and it's been validated by a number of people internally, believe that through smart value engineering, we'll be able to reduce anywhere from one to two million dollars of this six-point-one million dollar increase. But for conversation's sake, we're going to go at the one-million-dollar number, which would leave then approximately a five-point-one million dollar gap that we still need to work on. Now, our proposal would be, is that we would use additional fund balance, unallocated fund balance, to transfer over into the project. If you recall, every year within our budget, one, we're given a contingency by the council. To date, we have not spent any of the five-million-dollar allocated contingency. We also, and we've had a history of doing this, but we're still tracking this in talking with Vicky and Levi in our Budget and Finance Department, but we also have had a history of having our expenses come in less than what the budget has. And for the last several years, we've also seen revenues come in higher. We believe that our, when we close out and finalize our year-end, that will end on June thirtieth, that our overall expenses will be decreased. And oddly enough, even though many cities here in the valley are seeing some softening and even a flat revenue growth, we are still experiencing a really strong financial position on revenue growth. So between those three combinations, the contingency, the lower-than-expected expenses to run the city for the past year, and the higher-than-projected revenue, we believe that the transferring of the five-point-one million from our unreserved is still safe and will still be able to increase likely, when all things flesh out, there'll still will be additional money for, to address council priorities. Now, here is really probably, at the end of the day, the one positive news that needs to be called out. Within the construction budget for this project, we have three-point-seven million dollars in contractor contingency that is in those numbers. To date, none of that money has been used. In fact, the only way we can use that three-point-seven million contingency would be by the approval of the council. So we've chosen for this to say, let's address the, what we see maybe is some increased costs in the project, but we are not touching the three-point-seven million dollar contingency that the contractor has. And again, if we were to do that, it needs to come back to this body, and we would walk you through what we feel would be the reasons. But at this point, that, we don't feel as a project team that will be needed. There is also an additional three-point-five million in our soft cost as owner's contingency. We have not touched any of the owner's contingency. So as we look at filling this five-point-one million dollar gap, we still have seven-point-one million dollars in project contingency that has not been utilized. We're going to continue to manage very carefully, try to manage scope changes, work with our contractor, who I think is doing an incredibly good job of looking for ways to bring this project in within the budget range that we've had hoped for. And I think it is not unrealistic to say that when we close the project out and we're able to really rebuild back into our budget, the, or back into general fund, our contingency, that we may not have seen any increase from the project that we gave you since twenty-twenty-three. But I would prefer to come to the council, address the shortages, give you the reasons for these shortages, ask for the authorization to have, to be able to transfer over the fund balance, versus, let's start tapping into contingency and then, you know, if something really major happened that we just could not foresee or forestall, then we have to then figure out a way to do it. So with that, you know, we think there's, you know, that's the prudent way to go forward. Now, I want to identify, then, what we believe are three continuing risk areas, albeit they're somewhat on the minor side. As I said, we have now about ninety percent of the major construction elements bid by our subs and our vendors and our other contractors. But we have a couple of things we're still awaiting bids on that we should get in, so we did want to call those out. So the first one, within our soft cost allowance for audiovisual and IT, our low-voltage security cost, we have a budget of one-point-eight-five million for that. We know that we've seen some increase, a little bit on the AV side. So we think that when we get the final bids in, we've put about a twenty percent range. So in theory, that could add about another three-hundred thousand on a worst-case scenario. It may not come at that amount, but we've identified that as a potential risk. We'll know more here within the next three to five weeks, and of course, we'll keep the council informed. The second is our HVAC, sound attenuation, and our window coverings, some additional lighting for the amphitheater. We've got one-point-three million dollars in our budget. We think there's about a five percent risk, that the number could exceed that one-point-three by five percent. Again, now we're talking in the neighborhood of seventy-five to eighty-thousand dollars at the upper end. And then finally, we also, we build into our project budget the fact that when design, when our building safety and fire safety, look at the plans, they may come back and want some changes to better meet their interpretation of the code and a better understanding of the project. So we put money in the budget for that, but there is a small chance that that eight-hundred-and-forty-five, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars may be a little bit light, but if we're talking an order of magnitude of roughly maybe five percent. So those add up still pretty small, and again, even if we hit every one of those at the high end, we're still well within our project contingency to address it. But we're very excited about where we're at. And so now I'd like to do the last two things before we open up for questions. I'd like to kind of work through the schedule quickly and where we're at, and then we want to take you through a little bit of a drone view of the current project, and then, again, as I say, we'll be glad to answer some questions. Right now, again, if you recall, you approved GMP2 back in December fourteenth of twenty-three. Tonight, you'll be considering GMP3. And then the last one that'll come up will be Murphy Park. So we're still waiting to understand Velmatig Library and the implications there, but we're working on that, and what we currently have in the budget is roughly four-point-three million. We may, if the council decides to do more things, open up more landscaping, do different things, that budget, you know, could go higher. But again, we'll work with the council to figure out the, how you want to prioritize the means in which we would be able to pay for those items. So currently, right now, the schedule is, we believe, what we're on is that we see substantial completion by February of twenty-twenty-six. And so it's been, originally, we were shooting for December of twenty-five. So we're about sixty days behind schedule, but we're going to obviously work very hard to see if we can do anything to catch up that part of the schedule. But with that, I'd like to say that tonight, the sixty-seven million, two-fifty-nine, three-thirty that you're being asked to approve, will cover. Now, you will have approved everything for this project, lacking the Murphy Park. So between the sixty-seven million and what you've approved in GMP2, we now, you know, this will be the last major lift that we'll ask the council to do in preparation for this project. With that, we were used, we thought you'd enjoy, one of our assets that we have, of course, is our drone. We're getting some pretty good drone operators. We asked them to go up. So here you go, here's what the project looks like as of about a week and a half ago. Maybe we'll put a pause there. Can you go back just a hair at all? Is that possible? Okay, so what you're seeing here is we're looking at the west side of the City Hall project. You can see that as we've recontoured the land there, we have a series of window openings on the, along this area here. These will be expanded greatly vertically, so we're going to, they're going to be going in, and when they start their reconstruction, those will be areas that will help bring additional light into our garden level, into that area. But there'll be a number of examples of where you'll see additional light components coming in. Go ahead. drone operator was able to kind of take you through. So this will be flooded in light all the way down. This used to be, I think, our elevator shaft, so as we relocated elevators, that provided an opportunity to be able to utilize that open cavity that was already existing. And with that, and be glad to answer any questions or receive any comments you might have.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm trying to understand, I was kind of, as you were going through, doing the math, and we're looking at a, about a five-point-one million dollar gap, delta, however you want to phrase it, with a, hopefully maybe a little bit less, but depending on how we come out with the value engineering. And we've got seven-point-one million dollars in contingency. And with the other possible exposures going forward, I calculated that out to be about three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, not a lot of money. So are we anticipating a big, a really big gap with Murphy Park? Because a lot of the inflationary costs are not going to apply with Murphy Park because of steel and things like that. So I guess I'm struggling to understand is why are we transferring money? Why don't we just use the contingency allocated for this reason? Seems that there's sufficient contingency for what we need right now, and just use the contingency that's essentially already been allocated to this project? Or are you anticipating needing that money for something else?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Tomachoff, again, we now believe the project budget is now higher, but you still should carry a certain level of contingency, just as good project management and through expediency and efficiency of the project. You certainly could do that and then keep trying at the back end, try to keep adding on, you know, more money as you start closing out the project. It is just our recommendation, that was just as a matter of kind of full transparency, to do it in this manner. I think with regards to Murphy Park, there's still a lot of detail work to be done regarding that. We'll be discussing later today some concepts around Velmatig, which could greatly impact the amount of effort it might take for the park. And we still haven't had a chance to talk to the council in more detail about, you know, how we would take advantage of lighting opportunities for major special events. So our thought would be, you know, that would be the better place probably to move contingency over. Although again, what Vicky and her team will always want to do is make sure we use the right, the right sources of funds. Some funds we can use only in certain areas. We felt, however, in this particular case, moving over the, you know, the, assigning a placeholder on the five million of the fund balance was the prudent step forward.
Mayor, could I follow up with? So are you, so, I mean, we can always do the five-million-dollar fund balance transfer anytime. I mean, if the contingency ends up being exhausted, we still have the option to do the fund balance transfer. So I guess I'm trying to understand is, essentially, what you're saying is that we probably are going to need the five million and the seven million dollars, so the contingency is about twelve-point-two million dollars at this time. You're anticipating, I'm gathering, needing that seven million dollars for other things?
Mayor, members of the council, no, I would say to the contrary. I think that we're, you know, we're feeling very good with the additional five million dollars that we're requesting to be transferred over. It would only be for what I would say, if we use any of the project contingency, would be based on scope increases, would, you know, that once we understand what we want to do within Murphy Park. Remember, though, that at the end of the day, you know, we may not know some of these costs until we get late into the year next year. Having the five million transferred over means that when we have our CIP discussion with the council, this money now will already be set aside and not, you know, not allocated twice. So otherwise, if we just wait and use the contingency, we could program out, in theory, the, your contingency, and then all of a sudden, we find out late in the process next year, we need additional money. So this is just our recommendation to doing it. There's no, what I would say, there is no rightness, right or wrong way to do it. What you're proposing certainly could be done. We just think it's better to go this route and continue working and having the ability to know that if we need to come back and propose some changes to the council on scope that we know we'll have a fund source for it.
Okay, so can let me just explain what my, what my personal, and I'm a saver, so, and I think everybody knows I'm, when it comes to finances, I'm extremely conservative. And the five, five-point-one million dollars is savings money. This other money's already been programmed to this. So we're going to take money out of savings, and then my concern is that if we end up not needing the seven million dollars or all of the seven million dollars, that's going to go into general fund and get spent. It's not going to go back into fund balance. So I feel like spending the money that's already been allocated to the project and then spending fund balance if we need to spend it, but leave it in savings, because otherwise, the seven-point-one million dollars is going to be part of, it's going to go back to general fund, and it's going to be programmed for other uses. It's not going to go back to fund balance. That's what my concern is, is that we're, if it was me doing my project for my house or something, I would use the money that I allocated for the project first, before I took any money out of my savings to use for the project. So that's kind of my frame of reference. So that's kind of my frame of reference of what I'm, how I'm looking at this.
Mayor, members of the council, just out of, to clarify, if you make the $5.1 million transfer as recommended, and then any savings that we have from that contingency, it will go back into general fund, fund balance. It's set, as Mr. Phelps said, it's setting it aside now, but any savings from the project, we can transfer back into general fund. It's just, as Mr. Phelps said, we, we set them aside in general fund capital projects so we don't count that towards the requirements, your policy on general fund, fund balance. So we, we've set it aside so that we don't double count it or count it into the general fund, fund balance, because it's in the general fund, capital projects. But any savings that we have from that can, can be and will be transferred back to the general fund.
If I might just add one other item, I think that would help bring maybe a reason why we're going this route. First of all, we're going to be seeing, we'll be paying bills with our contractor for the next year and a half. We require council approval of use of any of the contingency dollars. So it won't just happen at one time. It'll, it'll be here, here, here and there. And then same way with our owner's contingency, we want to make sure we would bring that back to the council every time before we tap into that. So it's not just a single transaction where we assign it over. It really becomes kind of a death by a thousand cuts. We've really felt it would be better just to go ahead and, and put it in the project budget and then deliver, you know, kind of under promise, over deliver than to just do it through a whole series of transactions, which take time and take energy to kind of continually engage back and forth through our legislative process.
So can I just make sure that I, so what you're saying is the, the contingency, you couldn't just transfer $5.1 million of the contingency into the project now? You can only do it if you take it out of fund balance? Or I'm, because a death by a thousand cuts, it really makes no difference where the money comes from. If the money's getting transferred, then it's getting transferred and allocated towards all the bill paying associated with the, all the invoices that are going to come in for the project.
Mayor, and Mr. Bessler may want to add some clarity to this, but again, the, the owner, or excuse me, the contractor has $3.7 million in their budget built into this. And so again, it's a lot of it is how we process and do this. I know, Mr. Bessler, am I probably missing some?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, Mayor, council member. I think it, I'm going to go back to the phrase, there's no right or wrong way to do this. It's really about transparency. And it's been my experience building many things over many years in many cities, that it always comes down to the end and then we're all trying to resurrect our institutional memory of how we got there. I think all we're trying to do as a project team with, with Mr. Phelps's guidance is to just make sure you know that potentially we have this gap. We certainly have the resources within the money that you've already allocated in the 899 to cover that gap if everything goes very smoothly. This is a large, heavy civil remodel. You saw what was involved with tearing it apart. Now, we've got, we're on the cusp of really putting it all back together now, but I will assure you that there will be things that come up. We're doing, just as an example, a fresh example, we're doing the storm sewer pipe in Glen Drive right now. And in just six days worth of work, we've hit three unmarked utilities ranging from an old SRP water line to an old city sewer line. And I can't recall what the third one is, but they weren't marked on any ASBILs. So that's not the same thing with the built structure, but there will be things that come up. And I think all the team's trying to do, and Mr. Phelps is trying to do is just say, hey, this is really what we think is our maximum exposure. We can cover it however you want us to cover it, but we've really, it really is good news from that perspective. We're very excited. We do have that $7 million contingency, all contingencies, I believe over $50,000 that's spent, come back to this council as a formal action. And we also have these almost $3 million, a little over $3 million worth of allowances that we've said, things could change, but we think those allowances are good. So we're sitting here in a very good place, but we've priced this out. And because of these prices coming in higher than what they were anticipated to be a year, almost 18 months ago, we just want to put you on notice. However, we institutionalize that, if it's by transferring money in this manner, that clearly institutionalizes it. If it's later resurrecting, then that's another choice.
Thank you, Mayor. I find all this quite reasonable. I mean, it's basically a 7% increase. And I've read many projects started at about the same time we have, that have had, you know, much larger, you know, 25 or 30 or even higher increases. So I think we did a very good job of estimating. I think this came in very, very good as far as plan versus budget. You know, unfortunately, we have some pretty high inflation going on, and I know that's a lot of the cause of this. But then also some unknowns that we have discussed in this meeting. So I appreciate that information. I am, I also understood from what was discussed that we do have a $5 million contingency in our current budget that is not being used. Is that, did I hear that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have $5 million in contingency that is not being used in our current budget that ends in a couple of weeks, that is available and will become part of the fund balance, from what I understand. So therefore, we're, we would use that money. It's not going to be decreasing our fund balance, but using what we didn't spend this year. I also believe that it is very prudent that we do retain a contingency budget within the project, because we never know what's going to happen. I would rather have that there than, and know that we've got it there, rather than go into a recession and a few months or maybe many months down the road, have to come back here and make decisions on something else that we have to change. So I believe keeping the contingency is prudent and I would be in agreement in, in taking fund balance that we have now, excess from our current budget, almost covers the entire amount. I think that is a prudent thing to do at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I support the recommendation of staff on this. Inflation is killing everybody. And I can understand that there are additions, refinements to the project that were unforeseen that will enhance the project. And in terms of the total costs of the project are relatively minimal. I too agree with Councilmember Malnar. I'm more comfortable knowing that we have contingency available. Should something major and catastrophic and unforeseen come up, we have that contingency on hand. So I support the recommendation of staff. I think that when push comes to shove and we look at the final budget, we'll find that between value engineering, unused contingency, and perhaps one or two other sources, we will have covered that gap that has been identified today. So I support staff's recommendation.
Mr. Turner? Thank you, Mayor. In some ways, this feels like it's six of one and a half a dozen of the other. We can, there are some differences in there. If we decide to not make the budget transfer and basically increase the overall budget for this project by the 5.1 or 6.1 million, if we decide not to do that and we're using the contingency, we'll be better informed about where the contingency is being used. But I'm not sure that that's tremendous value to us or on a construction project this size to us or to our residents. I'm more concerned, honestly, that, so if we make the transfer, then we just, if we make the transfer, we have to admit flat out that the project is 5.1 or 6.1 million dollars more expensive than where we were when we approved it. Okay, we just, that's what we're saying. My concern then with the contingency is that we use this, I don't know what to call it, maybe it's bureaucrat math, that the contingency has now become free money. And that for project creep, oh, well, we can use the contingency. And that's not how I would like to do business. If we're going to have project creep, whether it be within the building itself or at Murphy Park and the library, I want that to be clear. That's the part I would want to be clear. And not be like, oh, well, you know, we have this contingency money we didn't use. Well, yeah, we did, because we increased the overall cost of the budget for the project as a whole. So I don't hear any great compelling reasons why we, and even my reasons aren't all that compelling. I kind of got a feeling that, to most of you, but I would rather not. I'm okay with making the transfer, but we just can't allow the contingency to be like free money. It's kind of like, you know, when you go shopping and something's 20% off and you feel like, oh, great, now I can spend that 20% on something else that I didn't really need. No, that's not how, that's not how we should be thinking as a municipal enterprise using our taxpayers' money. So it's something we have to keep a mind on going forward. And then I'm also, I'm also very interested in the value engineer, value engineering component, the roughly 100 items that, you know, could be cut from the project. And to me, that's, you know, sometimes when that happens, you start losing the parts that make the project special, or maybe that, you know, it was sold to the public on, you know, well, we could value engineer out the art, or we could value engineer out the, you know, the, you know, the light and glass and all these things that we were sold on. So I want to be, I'm concerned about what items we're going to be value engineering out of the project. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps?
Mayor, Mr. Councilman Turner, like, just two things, I think. One, it's, it's almost like you were sitting in our, some of our project meetings, because I will tell you to a person, we don't see that 7.2 million dollars as being kind of this extra little amount of money we can now go after. What we want to do is return all of that 7.2 million dollars. We, we really want the council, when this project is done, is to see that we delivered a great project, high quality, high value, and that we did it, you know, and you were fully aware of what the costs were going to be. So no, we're, we would be with you. We're not looking at, even though we have that in the project budget, as I said, everything would have to come back to some level of, of discussion with the council. Our goal is to say, we believe that with this new information, our assurance level is much higher than it's ever been in terms of now this new number, being able to deliver on this number. With regards to the value engineering, we are very fortunate, and I've done a lot, a number of large municipal projects, to have somebody like Eddie Garcia on our team. Generally, when you say go value engineer, you hire your project design team and the contractor, and they figure out some ways, maybe to make it cheaper, using the word value engineering, but sometimes you pay a price down the road. That is not the exercise we will be going through. Our internal project team with our engineering department, with Eddie, with Darren, with Susan from EDS, they will be at the table, going through this exercise of 100 items to make sure that whatever does get modified to achieve some value savings, that it's the right things done with the right strategy and not, you know, to the detriment of, of really caught, you know, the old saying, you know, pay me now, pay me later. So I think that's the advantage of the project team, is they're going to be side by side working on this value engineering exercise.
Mayor, if I might, I'm glad you heard me about the value engineering. The, I'll just say, you don't get it both ways. We don't increase the budget for the project to cover this contingencies. And then if the contingencies aren't spent, you don't get to take credit for not having spent the contingency money. That's my, that's the way I look at it. If you want to get credit for not spending the contingency money, then we don't increase the budget and you don't spend the contingency money. We don't, you don't get credit if we increase the budget and don't spend, expend the contingency money, because that's what the contingency was there for. So when the end of the project rolls around, whatever that will be, you can't, you can't get it both ways. You can't say, well, you know, we got an extra, you know, we got an extra dose of money upfront, don't take credit for having money left over on the back end, to put it plainly, from my point of view.
Mr. Mayor, my apologies if I made it sound like if we return the 7.2, we can now say we, the project was 7.2 million dollars less. That, that wasn't my intention. What I would say is, let's just say theoretically, we, we increased the budget by the 5.1, we returned the 7.2. What I think it would be fair to say is that since about 300, or about 3 million of it is really kind of the scope refinement, additional enhancements to the project, then really what we're looking at is the 2.6 million dollars in increased construction cost. And I think it means we manage that relatively well through the length of a, of a three or three and a half year project. So my apologies, I didn't mean to make it sound like we'd be able to brag that we, you know, have brought it in lower. That was not my, my intent.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, I think maybe there was some confusion that I'm questioning the inflation and the costs, and that's not what my, my line of questioning, not from you, but from some other people up here. My questioning was trying to understand is why the transfer from the general fund balance, rather than using the contingency? I'm just trying to understand that, because to me, what that does is essentially increase the contingency to up over 12 million dollars, because this is additional money that was, that is essentially contingency. So I just wanted to understand the financial maneuver and the reason that this is being recommended. I did not, reading the staff report multiple times, I still don't really, didn't understand the reason. So not questioning inflation, not questioning costs, that, and that staff isn't doing a good job. That's not what I'm saying. I just want to understand the reason why we're taking 5.1 million dollars out of fund balance when we have contingency available. That's what I'm trying to understand. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, and I guess I look at it a little bit differently. I want to have a contingency until the project's done. I want to know that we got something there, if something pops up that nobody's expecting, that we've got the money ready to go, because sometimes it's hard to get the council together in the time that it takes. So that's what contingency is all about. If it doesn't get used, it goes back, we didn't, we didn't spend that portion of it. Understand if we have increased cost, we do, but I'm totally fine personally with staff's recommendation, so.
Mayor, what you just said made, made me have a question, though. You said sometimes it's hard to get council together. We were just assured that any spend on contingency would require council approval. Then, then you just said that, that, that we didn't want to do that because it's hard to get council together. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that any contingency spend does require council approval. I don't know who wants to answer that, but.
It does. Go ahead.
Sorry. Mayor, council member, is this on? Thank you. I do need to clarify that, because there's a little bit of a nuance to it, and I may have slightly misspoke. So there's two levels of contingency that the city manager identified. There's one that's called the contractor's contingency and another called the owner's contingency. That doesn't mean the contractor gets to go out and have 3 point, whatever million dollars it is at their beck and call to do whatever they want. The city still needs to approve any expenses against that contingency. If you approve the, the GMP three this evening, that contingency is rolled into that. So you've basically told the staff at that point, you can spend that contingency at your discretion, not the contractor's discretion, but you will report back to us. It doesn't take a new council action, because you've authorized that within that GMP. And our commitment, as it always is, is to report that to you so that you know what it is. If it were something unusual or controversial that wasn't related to construction, we would come to you with that and, and have a discussion with you. The owner's contingency is not assigned under any contract to anybody at this point. So whatever, however that money gets spent under contract would come to council for formal council approval. Both, in both instances, the council will be made aware of prior to the expenditure of that contingency. One requires formal council vote, one does not. So I want to make sure I explain the difference there.
Mayor, since we're clarifying, I also wanted to just state this, if you make this transfer of the 5.1 million dollars, it's not going into project contingency. It's going towards the, the project. It will increase the project budget by 5.1 million. And it's simply, as Mr. Phelps has said, a recognition that the costs are coming in higher than they, than they were anticipated. So you are increasing the budget to the project. As Mr. Bessler just said, you're, would be at the same time approving GMP three? Three? And recognizing that. And recognizing that the cost is, is higher and that's the reason for doing it now. It just, what we're saying is it still leaves room for contingency because there's owner's contingency and, and contractor's contingency still built in. But this 5.1 million is not increasing the contingency to 12 million. It's going to the contract, it's going to the project budget.
Right, I have one final question on that. Would that money stay basically in general funds until it's needed or would it be transferred right off the bat?
Mayor, members of the council, the action that's on the agenda transfers it into general fund capital projects. Again, that just goes to, it's, it's sort of still in general fund as far as the financial statements go. But for our purposes, we're setting it aside so that we don't inadvertently count it in when we calculate the general fund unassigned balance for the purposes of meeting your financial policies.
Okay, so the reason I asked that question is, is because it's, we know, mentally, we know it's set aside. It's, it's still in, in our account. We're still drawing interest on that.
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct.
Okay, that, that was the.
Going to anybody, it's still sitting in our account. We're just setting it aside so it'll be assigned specifically for this purpose.
Right, understand. Any other questions? Okay, we have consensus, staff's recommendation? Yes. Okay. Okay, city manager's report, Mr. Phelps, any?
Yes, mayor, members of the council, I have just one item. Again, it's some positive news again. There is what's called the Nucleus Research ROI Awards, which is a national award. And what it does, it recognizes the top 10 organizations in the private and public sectors whose technology deployments have achieved exceptional quantifiable business results. So it's, they, they really look at how much you spend on a technology enhancement and then what were the results of that. And then they issue awards annually around that. And I'm very proud to say that Glendale was awarded one of the 10 ROI awards for 2024. And it was in relationship to our Move Works IT project. Now, the Move Works project was, worked around our service desk. And really, the challenge that was given to our IT department was, as we get more and more requests for IT service help, is can we find a, a way to increase the customer service? And can we do it hopefully even at less cost? And so the Move Works project was put together, which got us away from kind of a manual tracking of all of our IT requests. And it automated everything. So we went away from kind of traditional channels of like phone and email. And, and we really managed it in a very innovative way through what's called the Move Works program. Part of the, the heart of the Move Works program is that it's AI-driven. And so we have created an IT chatbot. Boy, that's a name we didn't talk about two years ago probably. And we call it Blaze here in the city. And, and so that chatbot has allowed us to be able to answer a tremendous amount of the IT questions that are coming in. And, and so as a result of that, it's really reduced down some of our staffing need. So we were able to reduce one FTE in the service department, which had an annual savings of 121,500 a year because we're able to handle a much larger workload. And also, it also reduced our staff time in general by roughly 3,500 hours, which is about another $85,000 in savings. So this, this award recognizes that the, that the implementation of the Move Works program had a tremendously high ROI return back to the organization. And again, I think it's very reflective of just the outstanding work that we, that we have within our IT department. All organizations, including government, are working hard to try to understand artificial intelligence. Interesting enough, as we have, as we have spoken at a number of conferences, as keynote speakers, we're one of the leaders nationally in terms of the implementation of artificial intelligence to help make what we do more efficient and, and to provide a higher level of quality and service. And again, it's reflective of your investments. This council, in my eight years since I've been here, has continually reinvested in our, in, in both our staffing and our equipment and our technology tools. And so this really is your award because without those investments, we wouldn't be able to achieve what we've been able to do over the last eight years. So congratulations to IT and all the, all the team members that put this together. And congratulations to the council. Again, I think your investment in them is showing a tremendous return on investment as well. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Grover?
Nothing, mayor.
Council items of special interest, council member Baldenegger, have you any?
No, sir.
Council member Clark?
Nothing today, mayor.
Council member Miller?
Nothing today, mayor.
Council member Tomachoff?
Yes, mayor, I do have an item today. I'd like to, staff, to bring back a discussion about a contribution in memory to the Manasty Ranch Historic Home in memory of Ron Short. Bring that back to see if the council's willing to have a discussion about that. Thank you, mayor.
Pleasure, mayor.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I agree with council member Tomachoff and I have the same suggestion.
Okay. Nothing else, that's all I have. Can I get a motion to go into executive session? Second. What did I forget? Oh. Sorry about that, I didn't do that on purpose. Mr. Turner, I'm sorry.
I would never think you'd do that on purpose, sir.
I didn't do that on purpose. In fact, I even had your name circled there, look at that. Okay, go ahead.
Nothing of my own today, but if I could join on with the, the one regarding the donation to the historical society, Manasty Ranch, I would, I think I could support that.
Okay, did I miss anyone else? Okay, all right, sorry about that, I didn't do that intentionally. So with that, can I get a motion to go into executive session? I have, I have a motion and a second motion from council member Clark, second and council member Tomachoff. Any discussion, hearing, and all in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. As have, do have it. Council meeting is recessed.